I don't, sir.
No. All right. It is Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. It is now 7:33 PM. We are live as a regular city commission meeting of the City of West Miami. And Madam Clerk, can we begin with the invocation?
Yes, who's going to give the invocation?
Please rise.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez will deliver the invocation this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Please bow your head. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support for the members up here on the dais as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the residents of our beautiful City of West Miami. May we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Finally, loving Father, please protect our military service members, law enforcement officers, and firefighters to ensure that they return home safely to their families after their tour of duty has concluded. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please say standing for the pleasure allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, item three. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanis is excused this evening. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Candida Blanca. Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez.
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Presentation of minutes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for May 4th, 2022, regular commission meeting.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Is there anyone for public comments today? Seeing none. Next item, please.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, this evening I have a follow-up report to an impromptu resolution approved at the last commission meeting regarding a proposal brought by Commissioner Candida Blanca. And I'm happy to report that both August and November and moving forward, all election on Election Day will be held at the Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose facility building. We are, we have been working, and John Michael is here this evening, and my request as well, we have been working to accommodate early voting as well at the site, and I gave a report to Commissioner Blanca this evening before the meeting. And Neri has been working with the Elections Department, and both of us have, have attempted to schedule the relocation of early voting to the Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose building. However, at this time, both the seniors and the children, we have an issue with securing early voting. So I come to you today to advise you that at a later time, when the recreation weight room building is built, we have the potential of putting the kids there during early voting, and it's something you can entertain, an amendment to that ordinance in the future. But for now, Election Day is secure in August, November, and for all city elections moving forward.
Is that starting in 2022?
That is starting in August.
So they're going to issue new voter cards for precinct 426?
Yes, and I think the city should join the county in noticing the residents of the City of West Miami of this, of this change effective August 2022.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all. You have any questions? We have the department director, and obviously we can respond to those.
Does anyone have any questions on the manager report?
No, thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
That's it.
Short today.
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney. Mr. Mayor, may I be excused for a minute? I need to go home.
Absolutely. Go ahead. While we're at it, next item.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
I don't see him. He's not here today, right?
None this evening. Item nine, committee reports. Report of the mayor.
I do, well, I would just like to mention that I was earlier today with Major Delgado and Chief Abila and the, and Valencia over at Firehouse Subs at RBI headquarters. And I know that Major Delgado represented the city very well in speaking at the event, the ceremony today for the grant that he pursued and got for, to provide AEDs for all our patrol cars. So very thankful for that, and it was a beautiful event, and, and I'm sure they were just as appreciative of the level of support you guys gave them and recognition than as we are of them. So thank you for that. Is, are we going to take committee report from Commissioner Chavez on the, is that somewhere else on the agenda for the, for the 75th?
He could do that under committee report if you yield to that, Mr. Mayor.
Is it somewhere else on the agenda? I don't see it.
Let me check. Yes, it is.
Okay, we'll just leave it for then, then. Okay. Next item.
Yes, next item is item 10, unfinished business. Item 10A, presentation of certificate recognizing 99-years-old resident Mrs. Solia Martinez by Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
That's why I want this, please, please come up.
Adelante. Para que la vean en la televisión. Un momento para tirar otra foto.
Don't. She looks great. It's the water in West Miami.
Muchas felicidades, señora Martinez. Muchas felicidades, señora Martinez. Dios la bendiga.
All right. Now to the less fun parts of the meeting.
Buenas tardes. Muchas felicidades. Ahora vayan a comer cake, que ahí es Latino América. Vayan. O comida, coma lo que quieras, arroz con pollo.
All right, at this time, I take out of order, courtesy to our former mayor. What item is it, Madam Manager?
We have an item. Give me one second.
Item H.
There you go, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. Item H is, Madam Clerk? You want to read the item?
Yes, item H, 11H, report by the office of the city manager in reference to results of renegotiation of bid amount with OAC Action Construction Corporation to meet the scope and budget for recreation center restroom and gym addition design-built project pursuant to resolution 2022-10, passed and adopted on February 16, 2022 by city manager.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, what we have this evening is a report by our office as instructed by this commission. The city went back through the city engineer and the director of public works and renegotiated the bid amount from OAC Action Construction Corporation to meet the scope and budget for the recreation center restroom and gym addition as a result of the design-built project pursuant to that resolution that was passed, which is 22, 2022-10. After the meeting held February 16th, they went back to the drawing board and came up with certain modifications to the project. So with that said, if we could allow Eduardo Muñoz from Red Design Group and our former mayor to speak on those items that have been renegotiated, and Mr. Pena, if there's anything that you feel we should report further, let us know.
Well, thank you very much for taking me out of order, and also, it's always a pleasure to be here in front of you, and this time serving in a different capacity the City of West Miami. So basically, although we're the low bidder, we're very conscious about your budget, and what we did is we went back and we made some reductions. The reductions, you know, included the racquetball court. Unfortunately, we had to reduce in that area. But also, we revised some prices, and we brought it down to about, in the neighborhood of $185,000, right?
Correct.
So basically, you know, it's kind of scary, because as you know, prices are going up and so on, so I will urge the, you know, the commission to move forward if possible, because, you know, to make sure that we can honor, you know, the contract. But looking forward to it. It's a building that is dear to my heart, and that is a long time coming. I mean, the gym that we have in place is not to, to the standards of West Miami. I think that we need to bring it up to today's day, and I think it will be a compliment to, to the building, and it will be a compliment to, to the facility that, that has our dear name of Rebecca Sosa's. So anyway, any questions?
There are four items, Mr. Mayor, that I'd like to read into the record of the items that we had to cut back on to meet the project that is specifically designed for the restroom facility and the gym. But along with that, we were a little bit ambitious and thought we would be, we would be able to cover all these other areas, but we have had to remove these as a result of the budget restrictions. And number one is the racquetball court, as mentioned by Mr. Muñoz. The removal of all costs associated with the flooring of the recreation gym. I spoke to Mr. Pena, and it looks like we're going to be finished, have a concrete, polished concrete finish for now, and we can work on that later. Remove costs associated in connection with the existing generator, and remove all costs associated with the removal of an existing tree that the city will be, you know, taking down using our own personnel. So that shaves $185,000 from the project, and we will be exactly where we need to be with the $1 million in impact fees and a $204,000 grant from the state and a match from impact fee for $204,000. So that, that basically comes to about a project of $1.4 million. So that's the report for this evening. You had all approved the resolution and asked us to come back and tell, and tell the commission how the project, what, what it would look like by renegotiating the, the conditions of the bid.
Okay, so what are the next steps?
The next steps are now sign the contract with OAC and move forward. I guess it's the bid, the bid bond documents and all these documents that we, we have to, you know, execute before we actually give them a notice to proceed.
Okay.
All right, Mayor, I want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Mr. Muñoz, thank you very much to help the city and to, to bring the price low and be the lower bidder, and we know that you work well, so we know the, the job is going to be done very good.
Thank you very much.
And very, it's very nice to see you here. You look somewhere, you know?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Only, only, only one request. The vice mayor said that he will be present at every single inspection, so if you can do something about that? Just kidding, just kidding.
No, he's definitely going to be there.
Thank you.
That's, there's no, there's no vote or anything, right, on this item?
No, this is a follow-up report. You've already adopted a resolution.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Good night, Mr. Muñoz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get back to the order of the agenda. Item, new business item A, please.
Yes, 11A. This is a second public hearing. Property address 5930 Southwest 9th Street, West Miami, Florida 32144. R zoning number 2021001. Applicants Renaissance Ballrooms Inc., 6971 Southwest 79th Avenue, Miami, Florida 32143. Ramiro Menendez, 474 Hunting Lodge Drive, Miami Springs, Florida 32166. Applicant requests a zoning change for the property of 5930 Southwest 9th Street, West Miami, Florida 32144. The property of 5930 Southwest 9th Street totals 6,300 square feet for the parcel. The total acreage of the R2 duplex is 0.14 acres. The parcel of land is within the duplex multifamily use corridor. The applicant is requesting to demolish the existing house in the R2 duplex lot and rezone the property to R3 private park for the purpose of providing a private park for residents of the accompanying development and their pets, zoning ordinance 282, section 18. So this is the, the second public hearing. Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant is here, and if you wish to hear from our zoning director on the item.
Absolutely. Does applicant speak before opening public hearing or during?
I would listen to the applicant first and, and then from Mr. Pena, and then open the public hearing.
All right, Mr. Williams.
Good evening. James Williams with Holland Knight located 71 Brickell, Miami, Florida. I'm here with my colleague, Mr. Hugo Ariza, and representatives of the applicant, Eileen Pinero, and David Jimenez. This is the final missing piece to the health resort that we've discussed for the last couple of months. It is simply, if you look at the board, the park next to the garage. Currently, there is a, a single-family residence on this, on the property. We would be demolishing it in order to develop it as a park. In order to do that, we have to rezone it from R2 to R3. And again, there is no increase in the density going from either, from the R2 to the R3. The, the density will stay the same.
Got it. Mr. Pena, if you want to go up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Basically, the same thing that Mr. James has stated. The, it's required in order for them to use the land next to the parking garage as a park. Right now, it's R2, needs to go to R3 for a private park, and there is no increase in density.
All right, thank you. So now I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Has anyone wished to speak? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have any discussion on this item?
No, make a motion.
This is just the public hearing. We have an ordinance.
We even threw this last time, don't worry. Go ahead.
So, okay. Item 11B, this is a second reading, a public hearing. An ordinance of the mayor and city commissioner of the City of West Miami, Florida amending Article 1, Section 3 of zoning ordinance 282 as amended by the adopted, adopted zoning map dated October 3rd, 2007, and future zoning map attached hearing and May part year two as ExVBA approving application for change of zoning by Renaissance Ballroom Inc., Renaissance Health Resort, West Miami, changing the zoning designation and classification for certain parcels of land located at 5930 Southwest 9th Street from R2 duplex family to R3 private parks, providing for compatibility and uniformity with the surrounding parcels and as adopted in the West Miami Comprehensive Development Plan dated September 7th, 2016, providing for conflict correction, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for effective date.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Second.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Mayor, you have to open it and close it. This is a zoning.
Yep. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone for public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Commissioner Blanca.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chavez.
Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time over the last couple of months. I know it's been a process, but it's been a pleasure working with everyone, especially your staff has been absolutely incredible. I've worked with each and every one, and I would do it 100 times over. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item, item C.
Yes, item 11C. This is a public hearing. Property address 6237 Southwest 10th Street, West Miami, Florida 32144. Applicant Carlos Hernandez and Ingrid Camino Hernandez, 6237 Southwest 10th Street, West Miami, Florida 32144. Special use permit number 2022005. Applicant requests a special use permit for the renovation of the property located at 6237 Southwest 10th Street, West Miami, Florida, providing for a two-story addition and reconstruction of existing house for a proposed new residence consisting of 2,737 square feet. Property is a single-family home with two bedrooms and one bath. The new addition will provide for three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. Property is owned residential, single-family, special use permit for index number 2022005, zoning ordinance 282, section 2B1, section 417, zoning ordinance 282, ordinance 9901.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, on April 26th, the zoning board had a zoning hearing for this property. The property is a one-story house, and they wish to build a two-story addition to the rear of the property and remodel the interior to facilitate better living conditions. The, there is no requirement for any variances or any exceptions to our ordinance. The area was notified 580 feet. The property is here only because the requirement of a two-story to have a public hearing. The property owner is here.
You still come up? If you can say your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, everyone present. Ingrid Camino Hernandez, address 6237 Southwest 10th Street, West Miami, Florida 32144. My Carlos, my husband Carlos Hernandez. We actually came last month to get approved for the second story. Basically, everyone's concern, it's always the privacy. When we were doing our plans and making our, our family, like looking to make our family more comfortable because our kids are growing. Unfortunately, when we purchased, I wasn't thinking that I was going to have baby number two, and surprise. So they are getting bigger. We do want to give them the space. We do want West Miami to be our forever home, so in order for all four of us to be comfortable, we need the space. So my husband took care of all the details. Basically, for privacy, we did take that into consideration because I've always said where my right ends, somebody else's right begins. So we did, on the second floor, it's the smaller windows. The only window that is a regular window, it's for, for emergency exit.
For fire.
Yes, correct. So if you have any questions, any concerns?
Well, it looks beautiful. I, I walked that street about a hundred times during, during the campaign, and I'm very familiar with that street, and.
Where the house with the blue door.
Yes, I'm very familiar, very familiar. And it looks, it looks fantastic. Does anybody on the board question, comments?
No, I just listened to you because they are doing a good job there.
Yeah, this is definitely what my, you know, my, my, my father, when he sat as a commissioner, mayor here, was a big opponent of putting the two-story homes, and this was part of the reason. And, you know, growing families have different, you know, different needs, and in order to keep families here long-term, we have to have those.
I mean, if we do go only back, we are taking away from the play area.
Right. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Congratulations on the little ones. I have a dream of a little home, so I know that space is essential.
Yes.
For me, this excites me because I grew up here, you know, I've been here my whole life. So seeing a project like this, this is just you guys laying very deep roots in the community. So that's what excites me, is seeing these homes pop up, people investing in our community, and I'm happy for you guys. It looks beautiful, so congratulations.
And actually, my daughter, my oldest, she did have her input in the house, and then this has always been my husband's dream of actually putting together our home, so he's taking care of the project.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Real quick, I wanted to mention that, that the reason also we want to do two floors is that we have, we have two nice trees, a mango tree and an avocado tree. So putting all that new program that we need, not only would diminish, you know, our backyard, but I would have to mitigate those trees, and they provide great shade, so, yeah. So that's one, also, one of the reasons why we wanted a second floor.
That's fantastic. Did I open the public hearing? I don't think I have, right?
No.
Okay. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone for public hearing on this item? Go ahead. Please state your name and address to the record.
Anthony Aliva, 5810 Southwest 13th Street. Just to put everyone at ease, will this be concrete block construction for the second floor?
That's a question for.
Yes.
Yes, it will be. It's, the perimeter walls are concrete, and the second floor will be wood trusses, so, yeah, but it's, it's concrete. Yep.
It's not really a debate, but is there, is there anything more you would like to add to that, or? All righty. Seeing no one else for public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion, one way or the other? Oh.
Next item is a resolution.
She's my parliamentarian. Go ahead.
Resolution first.
Yes, item 11D, a resolution of the mayor and city commissioners of the City of West Miami approving special use permit 2022005 at 6237 Southwest 10th Street, West Miami, Florida, currently zoned R2, single-family, allowing request to remodel a existing home, permitting a two-story house, requiring certain terms and conditions recommended by the planning and zoning board, and further conditions pursuant to zoning ordinance 282, section 2A41, and ordinance 9901, providing for an effective date.
Motion.
Correction, it was read as an R2 into the record. It's an R1 property.
R1, right. Okay, that's. And, and just to make sure there was, I mean, just to make, make sure we're not, there wasn't any concerns in the planning and zoning level? I'm sure you would have mentioned it, but. We got a motion from Commissioner Suarez and a second for Commissioner Blanca.
Commissioner Blanca, Commissioner Chavez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, next item, please.
Item 11E, this is a first reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city commissioner of the City of West Miami amending Chapter 4, Animals and Fowl, Article 1, Section 48, exemptions to allow for citizens at their own expense to, how do you read this?
Humainly.
Humainly?
Humainly.
Trap cats for the purpose of providing transportation to a licensed professional veterinarian to spay or neuter said cats, providing for conflict correction, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for effective date. This is sponsored by Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
This is a first reading?
Yes.
Second.
A motion and a second, call the roll.
Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four-zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item F, eleven F, first reading, an ordinance of the city of West Miami, Florida, amending and further clarifying two thousand and nineteen-eleven relating to vacation short-term rentals, creating Chapter Nine, Article Seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Miami, entitled Vacation Rental License Program, providing for purpose and intent, providing for definitions, providing for registration and rental license, providing for safety and operational requirements, providing for parking and solid weights compliance, compliance, providing for maximum occupancy, providing for application and license fees and penalties for non-compliance, providing for presumption and rental agreement, providing for severability, codification and repeal of all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, and providing for an effective date. This is sponsored by Vice Mayor Blanis.
So I know, yeah, I know Vice Mayor Blanis isn't here, but I, it's a first reading, so I like to move it along.
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Suarez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chavez. Please call the roll.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
We have, we have, we have, hold on.
Now, the problem is, I didn't, I get it now. Janice and Suarez is one after the other. Mr. Janice.
Chavez.
Chavez.
Chavez. Usually, Commissioner, I lead, I lead the one who made the motion for last.
All right, Chavez and Suarez.
So, yes, and Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four-zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we need to set the public hearing items on both of these ordinances, and I would recommend that we, I don't think we have time to advertise for the June first, so the fifteenth of June would be the next available.
Okay, sounds good.
For both ordinances, yes.
All right.
Next item?
Next item, please.
Item G, presentation of financial statements for fiscal year ended September thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, by city's independent auditors, G E M R T, Jerry Donates, Carlos Truva, G E M R T.
Good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Mayor Diaz-Padrón, city commissioners, and city administration, hope everyone is doing well, and my name is Jerry Donates with G M R T CPA, and I was the senior manager on the audit of the city's fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one financial statements. I'm just going to briefly provide a presentation on the results of that audit. First, to start off, the opinion in the audit report is an unmodified opinion. That means it is a clean opinion, and the statements are fairly presented in all material respects. There were no new accounting policies adopted during the year, and the application of existing accounting policies did not change during the year. In regards to the audit process itself, we did not encounter any difficulties in dealing with management as we completed our procedures, our audit testing, our analysis, and we did not have any disagreements with management. The finance director and the entire staff provided everything that we requested in a timely manner, and answered all our questions, our inquiries. There were a few audit adjusting entries that were needed related to depreciation expense and recording some retainage payable on the project, on the construction project, and recording financing, recording the financing or capital lease component of vehicle acquisitions. There were no findings in the audit of the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted either. There also were no prior year findings to address in this year's report. I don't know if you guys have the executive summary, the summary of audit results that was, that was provided?
Yes, that was forwarded today.
Okay, yes.
As an addendum to the packet.
In, in the executive summary report, the first page has a four-year comparison of balances, like cash, accounts payable, fund balances for the governmental funds and the enterprise funds as a whole. There you'll see that the unassigned fund balance, which is the fund balance that has no restrictions or commitments, has been increasing over the last several years in the general fund, and that, that is through efforts made by the commission and management throughout those years. In two thousand and twenty-one, the unassigned fund balance increased by approximately four hundred thousand dollars, and the balance as of the year end, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, is approximately one point seven million. Now ideally, this balance will continue to increase in the coming years. In the enterprise funds, there were no drastic changes other than the commencement of the construction progress on the water lines and the improvement of the water system, and the receipt of half of the funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. In terms of those funds, over time, as a result of amounts loaned from other funds and operating losses that have been incurred and accumulated, there are still unrestricted deficits that remain in the enterprise funds, and this is being addressed now with the infrastructure improvements and other analysis to prevent the general fund from having to continue to support these enterprise funds. During two thousand and twenty-one, there was also a single audit related to the fact that the city expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state funds. The single audit is being completed in accordance with the rules of the Florida Auditor General, and there was one major project in the single audit, which was related to the Potable Water Main Improvement Project. We're in the process of finalizing the report, but there were no findings related to the compliance testing that we completed, and the opinion is also unmodified. So that's, that's just the basic summary of the, the audit, but in closing, again, I'd just like to thank management and the commission for doing a great job in maintaining the budget of the city and its finances. It is in good hands. The challenge, as, as we've discussed briefly, is, is trying to alleviate the deficits in the enterprise funds, you know, as improvements are now made with the water and sewer lines, and then finding ways to generate revenues, you know, anywhere possible to, to help the city just grow, grow even more than it has. If, if you have any questions, feel free. If not, I'm available also anytime during the year to discuss.
Yeah, I know we had a lengthy meeting with the finance director and the manager, and I appreciate that, and I know we went over some, some things on the enterprise funds, and I'm sure you've discussed with him that some of the, not concerns, but some of the questions on.
Yes.
On the water, on the water funds in particular.
Yes, and we are addressing those.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Do you, you didn't finish yet, right? You're still working.
Well, we're, we're putting together the package, and we basically did all the work, the testing and compliance testing and all that, we're just putting together the final pieces to be able to issue it officially.
Your work is done. The only thing we need is the report.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No, I just want to tell me, tell Mr. Truva and Rodriguez and Conny and all the crew there, that we appreciate their work.
No, I will.
Because the residents, this is a big company, they take care of our numbers because they has been doing for years, and because they are friends of Rebecca Sosa and other people from the city for many years. But this company, if you want to get their service now, it's almost impossible. This is a big company. We are very lucky.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, it's a pleasure doing business with your company and your professional team. And, Mr. Mayor, I think that a lot of the recognition should go to the finance director.
Absolutely.
She's done an outstanding job, and for that, I thank you, Louie.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're wrapping up today's meeting, so let's get to the last item on the new business agenda.
Yes, Item eleven I, discussion in reference to possibility of implementing rectangular rapid flashing beacon signs in areas around city parks and in front of city hall in an effort to promote pedestrian safety. This is by Commissioner Chavez.
So this is your first item, right?
First item.
Okay, good.
I'll keep it short.
Go ahead.
So basically, what the intention behind this is, I've had multiple residents, and this has been my experience as well, trying to cross through crosswalks, particularly the one here in front of city hall. We have a designated parking lot across the street. Whenever we don't have parking here, we're directing people to park over there, so I feel that we should make it as safe as possible to cross. Actually, just experienced before this meeting, trying to cross there, there's plenty of parking out front, but I took a measuring tape, trying to see exactly how long the crosswalk is, and I couldn't do that until the light on Eighth Street turned red, because I was in the middle of the crosswalk and nobody would stop for me. So basically, I've spoken to different councilmen and commissioners from other neighboring cities that have implemented this, and to keep it short, I just wanted to open up the discussion for it. If you guys turn to your packet here, I'll see if you guys can see it from over there, but basically, there's two different types of, of these, of these lighting systems. One of them is in-ground, and there's a solar panelled in-ground as well as an AC-powered in-ground lighting system, and then another system is pole-mounted or post-mounted. So the first one is called, and not to get caught up with the names, they're, they're kind of crazy, but internally illuminated raised pavement markers. These are the cheapest ones from what I was able to, to discover, talking to the different representatives of different cities. Basically, there's one installed, and that's this picture here. There'll be one installed for every three feet of crosswalk, and these actually are pretty neat because there's no maintenance to them. Once they're installed, they turn on or illuminate the moment the sun goes down. So a passing motorist will know that they're approaching a crosswalk. These don't, however, notify the motorist that there's somebody actually in the crosswalk. So there's still potential that the motorist is going to blaze right through that as well, but it's lighting up a crosswalk and making people more aware that there is potentially somebody crossing the street there. These here, just for numbers sake, I'll throw out more or less a pricing that I was told. Should we discuss this now, or?
Whatever your pleasure is.
So I have a breakdown here, that's these two that you see, the two gray papers. If you pay attention to the first one, this is a bidirectional illumination, and this is basically a turnkey operation. They come in, they make the cuts in the ground for us in the concrete, and they install these, and they come with a two-year initial warranty, and there's different pricings per unit depending on how many we purchase. So roughly, as I stated before, it's one every three feet. If you look at the fifty-foot crosswalk we have in the front, it's more or less thirty-four lights because you're going to have them paralleling each other, and that comes out to about fifty-seven hundred dollars for that one crosswalk. And then the, this is the cheapest unit, as I mentioned before.
That's the in-ground unit, sir?
This is the in-ground, called the internally illuminated raised pavement markers, that turn on automatically with the sun going down, they're solar powered. There are other internal ones that I mentioned before that are, if you can turn now your attention to these items here. These are what the agenda references, the rectangular rapid flashing beacon system. So these are pole-mounted, they have a parallel bar that goes across them, and they're, it's basically a button that the pedestrian will push as they're entering the crosswalk. Those pole-mounted lights will activate, and then that system also includes floor-installed lighting as well that will flash as the pedestrian's walking through it. So if no one presses a button, the passerby, the motorist, is not going to be alerted, they're going to go right through the crosswalk. If a pedestrian pushes the button, all these lights will activate. They'll flash on the ground, they'll flash above ground. So these are safer, but with safety comes a higher cost, right? So this has two alternatives, an AC-powered system and a, a, a solar-powered system as well. So the pricing is, is similar in that respect, but if you turn your page now to the second gray page, sorry for making you guys turn so many pages, that's, that second column at the bottom there is in-road, an in-roadway light assembly, so that's going to come packaged together, the above-ground lighting and then the in-floor lighting as well. For a two-lane installation, for example, the crosswalk outside, it's going to, this is a much higher price, obviously, but it's going to go up to forty-four thousand dollars. It's, it's an expense, so.
Per unit, per unit?
For, for a two-lane installation that comes with the in-ground lighting as well as the pole-mounted lighting, so.
So outside is a two, for example, outside in the street here where.
Right, a two-lane, exactly. So they'll have the two pole-mounted flashing beacons on either side as well as the in-ground lighting. So I led, obviously, with the first item. It's much cheaper, and it's still going to, you know, let motorists know that they're approaching a crosswalk at least. I've had many citizens so far that have mentioned to me, I've had some, some women in the Mother's Day event that we had recently at the community center, that was one of their concerns as well, trying to cross, that it was a little dangerous, and I've had citizens that live nearby that say the same thing, that they're always, you know, pointing at the little sign in the front, saying that they're supposed, the motorists are supposed to stop as someone's trying to cross. So it's just a thought that I wanted to bring up for discussion. I think that a lot of cities see the importance of safety and are starting to implement these, so I feel that maybe, you know, we should look into it as well.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion?
Well, no, I had another question. I think you have a good idea, because especially here in front of city hall, we have the people, the residents that comes to the city hall, but also we have the police department. So we have two places important for the residents, and for the, not only our residents, the people around the area, that they come here and they come to both departments. And now we have the people with, with the passports, that we have a lot of people coming to, to our area. So I think it's, it's great, because I see the people having problems crossing the street, and I think it's a very practical idea.
So a couple more, just really quickly.
Wait, go ahead.
Do we have the money for this?
That's, that's what I was actually going to point out now. What I was told by other cities is it came from the transportation tax, so I don't know if maybe that can be the case for us as well.
From where, from the half pence, so stuff?
From the half penny. And then in addition to that, I also wanted to say that for implementation purposes, I asked how they went about getting them installed, if they had to go through the county and stuff like that. They mentioned that the first system, the one that comes on when the sun goes down, it's on the county's qualifying product list, so they're already pre-approved for install, and the second system is not, however, because the county doesn't want to have to maintain those items. So that would be up to us. And this contract that we're referencing now is a couple of pages of Aventura's contract, and it's a piggyback contract. So just to throw that out there as well.
So the, the real question is, is it something that the commission wants to entertain? Because then we send over to management, and management has to go and come back and tell us where the money is and isn't. But is it something that, we think it's a good idea? I think we heard from your Suarez, I think, I think, I think generally it's a good thing.
I think it's a good idea.
It's a good thing.
It's a good and practical idea, now what we have to work, and especially you, the young and strong, now show the muscle. Try to get the, we have to look for the money for this. You have to look in Tallahassee or in somewhere, if we can get some money for this.
No, I, I agree, and, you know, all of us being up here, you know, we, we are here for many reasons, and one of them is public safety and making the community safer for our families and others. So I feel like this is a step in that direction, so money's always the, the decision-maker, but it's worth looking into, I think.
Madam manager, you look like you want to say something.
So, yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Chavez, as you know, we discussed, and, and Commissioner Suarez and Blanca, you know that there's a process that we have to follow. Number one is we need to meet with the city engineer. The city engineer would have to prepare a small rendering or, for a concept, and we can use option one or option two, it depends on how aggressive we can become with funding these, these, these column deterrents for motorists. So once that is done, and when that is accomplished, is presented, and if you all agree with it, we have to submit that to Miami-Dade County. We have an inter-local agreement with the Office of Public Works and Transportation for Miami-Dade County, and they have to approve the concept. In addition to that, or simultaneously, we have to amend our five-year transportation plan. Mr. Penna, am I correct so far? We would have to submit an amendment to the five-year transportation plan to the CITT office, because they want to know how our portion of the transportation and transit dollars are going to be spent. So any change that deviates from the five-year transportation plan that is in effect now must be presented to them, and that's something we could do simultaneously. Ultimately, I'm, I'm, I'm under the impression that the BCC would have to approve a resolution authorizing for this to happen, so it may be months away. I think your first option from a financial perspective seems to be the way to go, maybe have one pilot intersection and then use that as your typical exhibit, and then move on to the others to see how it works.
I think that's a great idea, and I just, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment that. I just want to make a comment that this is, in my view, practical and and positive idea, and is a common good for the city and the residents. Now, what I said, manager said, a good idea always have to be work. So, like she said, we maybe take a long time, I mean, more time, but I think it's going to be possible. I think it's, because it's a good idea for the safety.
You got to search somewhere.
And and one more thing, just in speaking, not to make it dramatic, but in speaking to, for instance, councilmen in Miami Lakes, they actually turned to these in response to an accident that they had, that a pedestrian was killed by a motorist. So I think it's better for us to be proactive rather than reactive in that in that instance, so.
Oh, I mean, listen, we're coming off A Street, you know, I think we all know the risks of crossing on Second Avenue. So, uh, let's let's get started on that. You'll work with management to see how, um, you know, we get the ball moving and see where where it goes.
Yes, and in the meantime, we will work with the police department to try to put some, um, detail, traffic detail along these major intersections to make sure that we are safer.
Um, alrighty, uh, next item, consent agenda.
Yes, consent agenda items. You have what item, sponsored by Commissioner Chavez?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, item passes.
Thank you.
And good of the order. Does anyone have anything for good of the order?
Uh, just an update on the 75th anniversary-
I thought it was an agenda. Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, we met on May 11th. The 75th anniversary, uh, board is being mixed in this year with the 4th of July because of the elections that took place in April. Um, so far, there was a great idea brought up by Natalie Millian to potentially have a parade that was starting here at city hall and then making its way over to the rec center, so that way we can commence the different events for children and and the fireworks and such. So the parade at the moment, we're looking to get children from Sylvania Heights, spoke with John Michael as well. He took, he was there at the board meeting, had the great idea of having the rec center children involved, since the event is at the rec center, and trying to get potential ROTC members and and boy scouts, girl scouts, things of that nature, uh, going forward. So so far, what's been secured are the fireworks, that Madam Manager did a great job securing those immediately, since we're kind of cutting it close already. And then we have a DJ service that's being provided by Sergeant Borrego from our police department, so thank you so much for that. And we have other items here that are in the works, and we'll have a more of an update on that in the next meeting on on June 1st.
Yeah, so I, go for it.
Um, in the meantime, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I just had a phone call. I've been talking to a gentleman by the name of Joe, his last name skips me up here. He is a resident of the city of West Miami. They, it's a rock band. They would love to perform at the 4th of July, large music. They know that, um, this is the celebration of our country's independence, and they they are going to send us a little link to a video that they're they're doing. Um, they're going to honor the big band music and and that type of music, so.
That sounds like a call for-
It sounds like something for the chairman of the committee, so I will be circling back with Joe. He said he should have something for us, uh, by Friday, so I'll submit that to you and, you know, we can take it from there.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, Madam Manager. Do you have any questions for me?
We we actually have people that are designated, and we're going to reach out to you for sure, Chief. None of this is going to be possible without your guys' assistance and your say-so, so.
Okay, so I've I've, I don't, from the police department standpoint, whatever is ordered by the manager to get done, we'll do it. And I've already explained to her the cost, the expenses, the areas that need to be blocked, so she already is, has an idea of what the cost is going to be. It's going to be a heavy cost.
Right.
And that will be submitted to the committee for further review, and then hopefully by June 1st, we do need to bring it back to the commission so that some decisions can um, can be made at that point.
That that was just the the first meeting that we had, and ideas were being tossed around. The next one will be on May 24th, so we'll meet before that, and that way we can have a-
My doors open?
No, no.
Thank you.
May 25th at 6:00 PM.
May 25th, sorry.
Just as a side note, I I'm not on, I tried to remove myself from this committee to allow for more organic ideas to to flow. I did see in the report about, I know there's the free food versus food truck debate. Um, just so you know, I I stand on the on the side of the of the food trucks, just because it frees up a lot of our staff and volunteers to do other things. Um, I've been to a lot of community events in in City of Miami, et cetera, and they seem to have vendors that are that are vending foods there. The the free stuff is is the entertainment and and everything else that the city is providing. Um, but I think we can actually get even better quality food and and entertainment if we went through the food truck route, but that's for the committee to decide. Uh, I think that's where that's where I stand on it. I saw I saw it in the report, and I made note of it, but, um-
That was where we were initially leaning, and then Vice Mayor Blanis brought up the point of, you know, the mother with her four or five children.
Well, he's not here, so.
Right.
So it's a pushback. Um, but with that, is there anything else? Any other questions for the chief?
No, you'll have a finance report as well on what we have so far. I've been supplying the clerk and and Commissioner Chavez, and we'll talk about all these things and then formalize a budget.
Alright, thank you. And with that, I think there's nothing else. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Leading adjourn.